And all along.
There are eight people.
Okay, you're live. Okay.
Is everybody present tonight?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yes.
Okay, if we're all present. Um. I just wait to find out when I'm live.
You are live, Mr. Mayor.
I'm live. Hello, everybody. Well, I'm sorry we're late starting. We had issues that we had discussed before starting the meeting. Um, so we'll start immediately with the public question period. Two questions came in before the meeting to Pierre Tapp. And one of them has to do with item number, uh. Yeah, item number six. Um. And if you give me a minute, I'm just going to check.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the citizen put like item number six, but in reality is talking about item number seven. The content, it's about item number seven, not number six.
Okay, uh, fine. So with respect to item number seven, it's an HR issue. I never discuss HR issues, personnel issues in public, so I can't deal with that. The other question, as I recall, had to do with item number four. And the resident Morton Grostern, in this case, not anonymous, wanted to know if if that resolution was factual. Um, well, in my opinion, it's factual. Some of the councillors may disagree with some of the whereas clauses or with the whatever, I don't know. But they will have an opportunity to speak for themselves when we get there. All right, so now, uh, let me just see if there are any questions that came in for the question period. Let me just click here and see what I get. I don't seem to be getting any questions. Are there questions? No questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's.
There's a few questions.
There's around 12 questions.
12 questions. Well, I'm clicking on this and.
If you like, I'll read you the questions.
No, it's okay. They just came up. Okay, fine, 12 questions. Uh, so the first one from our favorite person anonymous. Uh, I would like to know why a resolution is being passed today regarding. Says SL. I suppose that means Cote St. Luke. And the answer is because um, I think it's important that that we know where people stand. This is an important issue. We just had a survey. I'll be giving out the survey results. They'll go on our website just as soon as I have the French version of the report. Lesia is working on it now. Uh, but the council has seen the survey results and and consequently, I think a resolution is in order. There were 544 people who um, completed the survey and I've been getting lots of people asking what happened. I'm trying to get it as soon as possible. In the meantime, we can at least have this resolution. That's the answer to that. Um, let me just get rid of that and move on. Uh, the next one, when is the meeting starting? Again, my apologies, we were late starting. Um, we're doing the best we can. Okay, the next question is. Like to know why a resolution is being passed regarding Cote St. Luke Road when we have not yet may been made aware of the survey results. Also, this is a huge issue for the town. Why is it being snuck into a special council meeting in between two long weekends? Is the hope to just pass it by similarly to how the spot zoning was done? Well, Mr. and Ms. Anonymous. Um, I don't believe anything was snuck in with respect to the spot zoning. I mean, we ended up having a register referendum. I don't know what that's about. Um, furthermore, uh, this resolution is uh, simply a statement of where council stands at the moment. Opinions may change later. I have no idea. Uh, it's it's just a resolution. It's not going to bind, uh. Well, I hope it binds the councillors to what they say, but it's not going to bind the town to anything. Nothing's going to change. There are a whole bunch of steps before anything's actually going to change, so don't worry about that. Um, anonymous. Different anonymous, same anonymous, I don't know. When will residents be consulted regarding Cote St. Luke Road? I can't imagine that many developers would want changes, especially after they are investing so much on renovating buildings. Um, well, I I gather, since we just had a survey and the question says, when will residents be consulted regarding Cote St. Luke Road? I presume that means residents living in the buildings on Cote St. Luke Road. Well, they'll be happy to know they were consulted because the survey that went out, uh, there were actually two identical surveys. Um, but they had different sets of PIN numbers. So the ones for Cote St. Luke Road can be separated from the ones from the rest of Hampstead. So we know, for example, that on Cote St. Luke Road, uh, 67 people filled out the survey. It was 477 off the top of my head who filled it out in the rest of Hampstead. Um, and on the of the 67, uh, people, uh, 41, I believe, were uh, not in favor of any changes on Cote St. Luke Road, which is not really uh, what one would expect. If you don't want to potentially have to move, you wouldn't want any changes on Cote St. Luke Road. So there are 41 residents on Cote St. Luke Road who expressed that opinion. They were consulted. And the other approximately third actually said they do want upzoning on Cote St. Luke Road. Now, perhaps some of those live in the condo building, which is not going to come down. Perhaps some of them live between um, Dufferin and Stratford, where we're not planning to do any upzoning at all. Um, and I know at least some who actually live in the area where the buildings might come down. And they still said they wanted upzoning. I've spoken to some of them. So that's what I can tell you. So the rest, so the answer to your question, the residents uh, living on Cote St. Luke Road have been consulted. Which brings us to the next question. It says, it's from anonymous, but it says Adriana Decker. So I presume that means that Adriana Decker is one of the anonymous people. Okay, and then from Adriana Decker, TH. Um, I don't know.
Probably meaning thanks because she identified herself as Adriana Decker. She wrote thanks and a second thing. I'm assuming thanks.
Okay, I'm just not into social media. All right, next one from Adriana Decker. Today at 8:00 PM is the Habs game. They haven't gone to the final round since 1993. Whose idea was to schedule a town hall meeting today at 8:00 PM? Well, the meeting was scheduled three weeks ago and at that time, no one, and I repeat, no one knew when uh, the Habs would be playing uh, their first game in the finals. I won't get into whether anyone expected them to be here or not. I'm simply going to watch the game just as soon as our town hall meeting is over. Uh, but residents don't have to. They can or not. I know there's at least one resident who emailed me earlier who will be um, uh, who will be attending that town hall meeting. How many? I don't know. Anyway, uh, we're going to keep moving as quickly as we can through the agenda once I get through the public question period. Okay, Adriana Decker, special meetings are supposed to be for urgent things that cannot wait. Why are there so many special meetings for non-urgent things? It's very hard for the residents to make time last minute for these meetings. This does not encourage residents' engagement and participation. Well, we're having a lot of meetings because we have a lot of things we have to deal with and we're trying to deal with them as quickly as possible. Many of them are urban planning issues, as is one tonight, as will be quite a few in our regular meeting on July 5th. And as quite possibly, there'll be others and other special council meetings. Um, we want to help residents as much as possible by having meetings in as timely a manner as possible. So that's why there's so many special council meetings. Next. Uh, from anonymous, I presume this is not Adriana Decker. So from some other anonymous, it says, this question is for councillor El Fassi. You had previously stated that you did not think that any type of votes or resolutions regarding the development of the land on Dufferin should occur until after the election. Are your views the same regarding any changes to the zoning on Cote St. Luke Road? If not, can you please explain what the difference is and why this resolution should not wait as well? Thank you, councillor El Fassi. Go ahead, your turn.
I actually think it's a great question. And I really appreciate and respect the questioner, yeah, you're anonymous. I have absolutely no problem to propose the same if there is a seconder or there is a majority in council to oppose the discussion on Cote St. Luke Road until the next election, until the next council will be in place. I have no issues whatsoever. So to me, eh, I propose the town eh, the piece of land we have at Public Works. Eh, it's a very rare piece of land in Hampstead. I thought it's a very important eh, item. And it should be only presented after the the new council is in place. And this question is absolutely fair to ask, and I will absolutely second the motion or propose a motion. Or if the council will agree to the have the discussion on Cote St. Luke Road after the new council is in place. I hope I answered the question clearly.
Uh, thank you. Is there anybody else in council that would like to comment? Otherwise, we'll just move on. Okay, nobody, so we'll continue. Uh, anonymous, what time will the meeting begin when it started? Um, anonymous, will the results of the recent survey on the face of the Cote St. Luke Road be presented? Yes, on our website, just as soon as possible. I got an email from Lesia. Today, they're working on the French translation. Uh, next, anonymous, would you explain the process of initiating a register and then referendum? On the upzoning of Cote St. Luke Road, the Royal Mount project is in a situation whereby zoning changes have prompted a call for a referendum. Seems there will be a public consultation process prior to asking for a potential referendum. Okay, I don't know the Royal Mount situation at all. Uh, in this case, uh, I think the answer to your, the best answer to your question is. Um, I anticipate, whether it's this council or the next council, it's actually all only four months, pretty much a little bit more to the election. Um, this council or next council will certainly, I imagine, uh, have a new um, urban plan, master plan, sustainability plan, call it what you will. Um, and after that, uh, at some point, there will have to be concordance bylaws. And those concordance bylaws will be subject to a register and a referendum. So I do see that happening. I, no matter what happens, even if council moves ahead with this now before the election, the concordance bylaws will almost certainly not happen until after the election. So it will indeed be a new council. No matter how we do it, it'll be a new council. That will have the final say um, on this uh, uh, very important issue. Um, and as I said, there will be a register and a referendum. I certainly foresee that. Okay, next one. Anonymous and it's Leah. Okay, hi Leah. Uh, so I guess you were one of the other anonymous. Okay, fine, wonderful. Uh, next, Adriana Decker. Special meetings are supposed to be about urgent things. Why are we having so many special? I answered that. Next, uh, anonymous, why are you revisiting the Cote St. Luke issue after such a decisive referendum? The referendum was on spot zoning. This is on uh, um. This is on upzoning of most of Cote St. Luke Road. They're not the same. Um, Adriana Decker, this this infranchises the residents, um, on the contrary. I think what we're doing infranchises the entire town. Uh, next. Anonymous, what proportion of the population of Hampstead answered the survey in percentage? It was by house. And um, about 10% of those living in apartments on Cote St. Luke Road answered the question, the survey. 22% in the rest of Hampstead answered the survey. Next, Adriana Decker, after the referendum, every single one of you said that you had heard the residents and that you would hold many town halls and open consultations with the residences. However, it's not happened. A single survey is meaningless. So why are we going back on your word on record and voting on a resolution? Uh, there. I don't think a single survey is uh, meaningless. On the contrary, I think it is very, very important. Uh, there may be consultation meetings on different things. Um, and um, and that's all I can say at this point in time. Uh, when those other statements were made was before COVID. A lot of things have changed. Okay, next.
I just, I just, I just want to add to address that last point that Adriana had brought up. We didn't bring forward this resolution. The mayor did. This is, this is on the mayor, not not the council.
Yes, but I don't think that's what she was talking about. Okay, Adriana Decker, the survey said it was anonymous, yet I see you were able to identify whether.
First record, she, she said, so why are you going back on your word on record and voting on a resolution? The only reason we're voting on a resolution is because the resolution was brought forward and put forward by the mayor, not by council.
Okay, good, but I don't think that's what she's talking about. Anyway, it doesn't matter. Moving right along, there's hockey game coming up. Okay, Adriana Decker, the survey said it was anonymous, yet I see you were able to be identified where the residents live. This was never disclosed in the survey and a serious breach of confidentiality. No, not at all. Uh, the PIN numbers, the survey did not identify individuals. The fact that we wanted to break down the data by those living on Cote St. Luke Road and the rest of Hampstead is simply information that I think is useful for the council. Just as the age breakdowns are information useful for the council. And we had another breakdown showing uh, um, uh, the people. A breakdown by the people in favor of the civic center versus not in favor, there are a variety of different breakdowns. Uh, I think it's useful, uh, and if people don't.
But I may interject those. Hang on, hang on, Warren.
For the, for the record, sorry.
Wait, Warren, Warren.
Council goes, hold on. I just want to say, I just want to say that council was not aware that there was going to be a difference between Cote St. Luke residents and not. We were surprisingly got the survey results and that was there. Second of all, I want to make it very clear that it's not right to be segmenting out Cote St. Luke Road residents from other residents because residents are residents and each vote should be weighted equally and proportionally. So I disagree 100% and I'm shocked when I saw the results like that.
That's exactly what I was going to say. And on that point, Mr. Mayor, I was going to say to you was that on the other identifiables, which was your age group and whether you want a certain thing, the residents had the choice of identifying themselves in that aspect based on that segregating, segregating their groups. The location where they live was never uh, defined stating, do you live on Cote St. Luke Road? Yes or no? That's by the fact that this was done, it was unbeknownst to the resident and council.
Okay, uh, yes, uh, you're both right, absolutely, 100% right. If people think that it's my bad, fine. If people think that this was a great idea, that's fine too, but it's the people are going to decide. Okay, moving on, uh. Next, anonymous, sorry, I was late. Not sure if this was already asked. What is the point of a resolution when the survey results are not in? Uh, it is important, the results are in as far as the councillors go. They've seen them. We've discussed it for over an hour and a half at a previous meeting. Um, and I think it is time to have this resolution. I think it's a very important resolution. I think everybody should be on record, as I said, 544 people, Hampstead homes. It's not even people because each home represents maybe two, three people. It's an awful lot of people in this town who took the time to fill out the survey. They're going to get the results very, very soon, but in the meantime, they're going to see what the councillors feel about um, about the findings to some extent at any rate. Okay, next. Um, anonymous, why are we dismissing the results of the referendum when 860 people voted? They weren't dismissed. Obviously, the project didn't go through. That's what the law says. That was what was done. They weren't dismissed at all. Um, anonymous. Miss Wigginsburg. It seems that you will be moving out of Hampstead. If that is the case, should you not be abstaining from voting on contentious topics that will affect the residents for decades to come, but won't really affect you? Um, councillor Wigginsburg, do you want to answer or?
Yes, I would love to answer. So, no, I, yes, I may be, I am planning to be moving out of Hampstead to follow my family. So that is true, but don't forget there is a election coming up and every single one of us, including the mayor, may be voted out and yet we're all planning to make decisions until we get reelected or not reelected. So it's the same thing. There's no guarantee anybody will continue on or not. I actually really do care about Hampstead. I made the decision when my rest of my family left to stay in Hampstead. I went out of my way. I love, instead of being able to live with my family in other areas in Montreal, I made the decision to stay in Hampstead because I do care, because I do take it very seriously. And I really want to ha- help out with what is best for Hampstead. So I'm, you know, I, 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 I'm, it's bothering me that this, there's this continuous questioning of my honor and my integrity because I really do care about Hampstead. I think my co-councillors know that. And I, I don't think it's fair that because my lifestyle or my life has changed that I should be questioned. And I am, I put myself and my family at a disadvantage by staying in Hampstead and I did it because I do care. I hope that answers this succinctly.
Thank, thank you very much. And moving on to the next question. And that was addressed previously, of course. Um. Okay, next. Anonymous, why was costly survey conducted considering the population of Hampstead voted against changes on Cote St. Luke? Uh, during the referendum, I thought this issue had been resolved. The population spoke. What was the point of the referendum if we are still talking about this today? Thank you very much. I answered that previously. Next. Um, anonymous, it's Leah. I am not anonymous. Okay. Uh. Then there must be a way that you can type in your name so it doesn't appear on my screen as anonymous. I hope we'll find it before the next meeting. Um. And anonymous, not Leah, not Adriana Decker, just anonymous. The people who don't want two buildings to be taken down, don't want the strip taken down, obviously. You are now doubling down. Do you expect we will sit quietly? Everyone has.
No, this is Leah.
This is Leah. How do we?
Yeah, you read the next question.
It's how she was logged in, so uh, she's putting herself, identifying herself after the question.
So it's Leah Lasry, um, and um, and okay. Uh, so you're doubling down. Do you expect we will sit quietly? Uh, I expect there's an election in four and a half months and everyone will have their say. Okay, and moving on, anonymous. People are livid. You're doing a second rezoning. Two thirds of people on Cote St. Luke Road are against this. Don't you care about all your residents? And I mean all. I care about all residents and I take care of all residents. Next, Adriana Decker, the survey said it was anonymous, yet I see you were able to be identified to where residents live. This was never disclosed in the survey and a serious, that was said before. Next. Uh, anonymous, is it possible that the upzoning does uh, does somehow pass? That each, that if the upzoning does somehow pass, that each individual building that could potentially have an eviction would ask for a reg, a register and a referendum for each individual project, as has been said. That spot zoning is different than upzoning and the answer is no. Uh, next. Leah Lasry, okay, next. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you should realize elections can be won or lost on Cote St. Luke Road. I certainly do realize that. Thank you. Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, can you please slow down a bit? I can't understand anything of what you're saying. You seem to be in a rush to answer the questions of the citizens who elected you. Thank you. I'll try to go a little slower. Uh, Mr. Goldwax is right, and this is a terribly unethical survey. Thank you for your comment. Anonymous, when so many council members are against what you are doing, they are downright livid. Why are you continuing this way? Why did you segregate Cote St. Luke residents from everyone else? Each vote counts. And let me tell you, in a referendum, those who are affected come out before those who don't come out. This really affects those people. Thank you. Anonymous, are residents of Cote St. Luke Road not residents of Hampstead? I'm very confused. Can you please provide a detailed explanation as to why a distinction was made between residents of Cote St. Luke and those of the rest of Hampstead? Uh, yes, I can. Uh, it's kind of obvious that people who are uh, facing the possibility of eviction will have different views than the people in the rest of Hampstead. So I think it's an interesting breakdown. The fact that one third of those people actually want upzoning is also very interesting and I think it has to be taken into account. Um, Adriana Decker, what was the overall result of the survey of all the people who answered combined? Um. Uh, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm giving it to you roughly. Uh. On the issue of a civic center, about 61%, everybody combined versus 30 something percent, 35, 31, I'm not sure. Uh, didn't want a civic center, so clearly most people wanted a civic center. On the issue of upzoning Cote St. Luke Road, everything combined, um, 35% wanted no change. The most, uh, for those wanting upzoning, which was 65%. Um, 24%, the most popular option was 10 stories, 24%. Second most popular was more than 10 stories. I think it was 14%. Then came eight stories of 13% and I believe six stories at 11%. Uh, for sustainability, over 80% uh, combined wanted uh, sustainability initiatives. Uh, but again, you'll see all those results in much more detail and you'll be able to cut and slice them, do all kinds of fun things with them when we get the reports on our website coming soon. Um. Anonymous, councillor Schaefer, do you have any interest clients on Cote St. Luke Road that own buildings that may be affected by a resolution? Should you refrain from voting on the resolution if you do, councillor Schaefer?
Yes, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I do want to state that uh, I, there was a letter placed in my mailbox yesterday, Sunday, dated June 26, 2021, which I will read in full, but I should point out to you that I am, I, I think that the people who were brave enough or not brave enough to write the letter should have at least indicated who they are. I receive a two-page letter, not signed by anybody, and yet the, the letter starts to read as follows. Dear councillor Schaefer, our group is extremely concerned about a conflict of interest situation that you may not be fully aware of. Given your unequivocal expression of the need for democracy, we believe you will understand the issue and will take the appropriate steps at the first opportunity. Please look at the enclosed document. The document to which reference is made refers to certain properties uh, registered in the name of a company known as 11938070 Canada Inc., of which Mr. Gad Beton appears to be a shareholder amongst other people such as SBE Finance of Toronto and Ynet Holdings and in other buildings, Simon Suray of Toronto, et cetera, et cetera. I want to make it crystal clear. I know Gad Beton. I do not represent Gad Beton on any real estate matters, nor have I ever been retained by him to represent him on real estate matters. I represent a company by the name of Holland Leasing 1995 Limited, which is engaged in the business of leasing vehicles to the public at large. And that is the only company with respect to which Gad Beton is involved and who is the president that I represent. Notwithstanding that fact that I do not get involved in any, I am not even retained on any real estate matters involving Gad Beton. The letter and the, and I stated this previously because I think I should point out that the reason why certain residents of Hampstead know that I represent Gad Beton is because I stated it publicly. I don't hide uh, any pertinent facts from anybody. Especially residents of Hampstead and my count, fellow council members. So this continues on. These three properties make him a significant property owner on that street, and he will be a major beneficiary of the upzoning currently being proposed by Mayor William Steinberg. As again, the documents attached show that it's not Gad Beton's property. It's a corporation of which Gad Beton is involved as a shareholder along with other people. So it's not just Gad Beton alone. Continuing on on the letter, is our view that a substantial conflict of interest exists, and further, this matter is a clear violation of Article seventy-eight-one of the Code of Professional Conduct. I'm going to stop right now, because when I got that letter, I feel that it was incumbent upon me to communicate with Belonge Survey, Mr. Mark LaLonde, attorney, and ask him what his opinion, wrote me a seven-page letter, so I'm not going to read seven pages of it, but I will deal with the, uh, with the article of seventy, of Article seventy-eight. Um. And to which Mr. Maitre LaLonde stated as follows. Finally, as a lawyer, councillor Schaefer is also bound by his Code of Professional Conduct that contains similar provisions when a lawyer holds public office. And since he talked about other issues, he says, where he said, I do not have a conflict of interest in any manner whatsoever. He goes on to say, once again, there is nothing that suggests that councillor Schaefer is taking advantage of his office to further his interests or those of any other person. Therefore, he is not in a situation of conflict of interest within the meaning of Section seventy-eight-one of the Code of Professional Conduct. Notwithstanding that, I will continue now with the letter unsigned by supposedly the group, who I, I think you should have the courage, if you have, if you write a letter, you should tell me who you are. We hope you will do the right thing by recusing yourself as you did with respect to minor exceptions from your son's house, from all discussions and voting on any matter pertaining to Coates St Luke Road, including any revision of the town's master plan. So I consulted Mr. Maitre LaLonde about the master plan. And here's what Maitre LaLonde wrote to me today, June twenty-eighth. In this case, we understand that council intends to amend the master plan for the redevelopment of Coates St Luke Road. We also understand that councillor Schaefer does not own any property on Coates St Luke Road, either personally or through a company. So this decision will not have a direct or indirect financial effect on him. We also believe that this question has no indirect pecuniary effect on him as a lawyer. As his client, Holland Leasing is not the owner of any property on Coates St Luke Road, and councillor Schaefer has previously stated that he is not involved in any legal capacity in Mr. Beton's real estate business, which I reiterated to you a few minutes ago. More than thirty years ago, this is important to everybody to listen to. More than thirty years ago, the Superior Court decided that a councillor who was also a notary was not in conflict of interest simply because a municipal decision affected a client of his firm. It could not also be shown how the councillor benefited from such decision either directly or indirectly. And the name, the, the court case is, uh, a Superior Court case of Gould versus Tashero, uh, cited in Jurisprudence Express eighty-nine, that's seven forty-four. Therefore, the fact that councillor Schaefer has an existing professional attorney-client relationship with Mr. Beton or one of his companies is insufficient to conclude that he also has a pecuniary interest either directly or indirectly in all of Mr. Beton's other businesses. I don't have any pecuniary interest. I'm not involved in any of his businesses. I'm only involved as an attorney for Holland Leasing Nineteen Ninety-Five Limited. So in conclusion, Maitre LaLonde says on this subject of the master plan. Based on the facts available to us, we cannot conclude that councillor Schaefer could reasonably be expected to benefit financially or suffer a financial loss, depending on the outcome of council's decision regarding Coates St Luke Road, either directly, indirectly, personally, or through his law firm. Therefore, he is not in a situation of conflict of interest. I think that, uh, first of all, I, 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 I do not, uh, shrug my obligations, but I feel that I was, uh, elected, uh, to do what is in the best interest of the town of Hampstead. And that includes making sure that I do not have a conflict of interest. So when I got this letter, I didn't wait. I immediately called Mark LaLonde, who is very knowledgeable on the subject, and I asked him to give me a written opinion prior to this meeting, because I was expected to make my declaration, as you said, and as the unnamed group, a clear, simple public declaration of the next council meeting and continuous abstaining will suffice. There will be no continuous abstaining. I will make my decision on each and every issue. And if I should feel that any issue that involves a, a, a property of which Mr. Beton may be a shareholder or a director, I will make my decision on that particular, uh, issue when the time arises. But so far as the, the master plan, I read to you what Maitre LaLonde stated. I do not have a conflict of interest, and therefore, the master plan affects the entire town of Hampstead, and I have no conflict of interest. I have, I don't feel in any way, shape, or form that I should be precluded from exercising my rights as a city councillor on the master plan. I think I've answered both the unnamed group in quotation marks, and I provided you with my reasons, as set out in the seven-page letter, of which I did not quote the entire letter, but every aspect was covered by Maitre LaLonde, for whom I thank him immensely. And he stated in every way, shape, or form, I have no conflict of interest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to respond to the unnamed group.
Thank you very much for a very thorough answer. Okay, uh, next. Uh, Mr. Goldwax is anonymous, of course. Mr. Goldwax is right, and this is a terribly unethical survey. Thank you for your comment. I disagree. Um, anonymous, please clarify your answer, no, to the seven fifty-four PM question. I'm sorry, I have no way of going back. So I don't know which question you're referring to. If one of the councillors knows and wants to tell me, I'll try to clarify it. Any councillor know?
Yes, uh, seven fifty-four was, was. Anonymous, people are livid. You are doing a second rezoning. Two thirds of people goes in New Court are against this. Don't you care about all your residents? And I mean all. And then I'm sorry, no, sorry, I don't think it was that one. It was the next one. Is it possible that the upzoning somehow passes that each individual building could potentially have evictions? Would ask for a register and referendum for each individual project, as it has been said that spot zoning is different, upzoning, and that's what you responded.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'll be happy to clarify. Um. If somebody comes along and wants to do spot zoning, which is doing something that is not allowed in the overall zoning, of course, that's subject to a register and a referendum just for the people living in that zone and the contiguous zones. Um, which is what happened in the case of the, uh, the previous building that was proposed. However, if the zoning for Coates St Luke Road is changed, and somebody wants to do a project that is within the zoning for Coates St Luke Road, then no, a register referendum is not required. Okay, there's a clarification. Um, anonymous, I'm curious why no other council members seconded the motion to postpone the resolution until after the election. Uh, it wasn't a resolution, it was simply a comment by councillor Alfasi.
Yeah, I, I would, I would just say that, uh, I, I think it's a, it's a discussion, it's a comment that merits discussion, and I'm not totally opposed to the concept in general. But it just should be noted that it's a special council meeting, so no resolution can be added or anything to this meeting agenda unless it's unanimously approved by council, which, uh, I don't think there's appetite at this moment, but I could be wrong.
Uh, thank you, councillor Buttoning, that is correct. Um, anonymous, Leah Lashley, please answer my question. I'm sorry, I don't know what question. Next, uh, Jeremy Levi. What legal ramifications does a Coates St Luke motion have if it is passed? Um. Well, at the moment, none. Uh, but it does put everyone on record as to what their views are. And I think the residents of Hampstead are very interested in what everybody's views are. It's an extremely important issue. So that's why we have the resolution there. But legal ramifications, I mean, it doesn't change the zoning or anything like that. Okay, next. Um, Adriana Decker, the stat you just quoted for overall results don't make sense, as they added to quite a bit more than a hundred percent. Um, I don't think so, but you're going to see the results on the web and you can add them up. There are, um, cases where they don't add up to a hundred percent because there are people who chose not to answer a question, but it's usually a relatively small number.
But Bill, one other thing, the numbers are never going to add up to a hundred percent because they round them. So it's going to be plus or minus like one percent because of rounding.
Yeah, that, that's correct, that's correct.
If you have like a forty-five point four and a forty-five point four, that's going to round up to forty-five plus forty-five, and they're going to put it as a ninety instead of ninety, uh, ninety-eight point eight or ninety-one.
That, that is correct, uh, but I don't, but.
But that's off only by one percent probably. And then there's another three percent who, 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 uh, didn't answer or refused to answer.
Yes, but the questioner suggested the numbers I said added up to more than a hundred, considerably more than a hundred percent. They, they couldn't have added up to considerably more than a hundred percent. But let's leave that until people see the results on our website. Okay, anonymous. Why did you not make the rest of the council aware that you are making a distinction between residents who live on Coates St Luke Road and those in the rest of Hampstead? I don't understand why the council wasn't aware of that. Are you not working together? Is the communication between the mayor and the rest of the council broken? Well, I don't think the communication is broken, and I didn't think this was a fact that needed to be publicised in advance. Um, anonymous, I mentioned two points. One, council people, I'm mad at you for this power play before an election. Two, those on Coates St Luke Road will come out during a referendum and they won't want this. As you saw the first time, those unaffected didn't vote. Why wouldn't you find a way to create consensus? The answer to your question is, uh, well, I have no idea with which council people may or may not be mad at me for what you are calling a power play. Um, there's no power play. I am simply doing what I've always done for sixteen years, which is doing what is in the best interest of the majority of residents in this town. And, uh, and I trust that, uh, that, that is the way most residents in Hampstead want their mayor to do. They want the mayor to have a vision. They want the mayor to, uh, explain his vision. And they want an opportunity to express their views as they got in the survey. And finally, they want to be able to come out and vote, and they will. Um, anonymous, is it possible that if the upzoning does somehow pass, that each individual build? Now, this question has been asked before, sorry. Um, anonymous, so upzoning cannot undergo a register and a referendum? Not exactly.
Can I, you want me to explain the two, the two methods here and how it works?
Uh, we discussed it before, so I'm sure, uh, you can explain it very well. Go ahead.
Okay, essentially, the way that it's going to work for upzoning of Coates St Luke Road is there's two options that's at the prerogative of the governments in power, whoever does it. You could either make a zoning change for Coates St Luke Road, which would then allow the residents in the zone of Coates St Luke Road plus contiguous zones to vote. Uh, there would be a register and referendum, and then the upzoning potentially is approved or not. That's exactly what happened in the referendum. There was a project that went to the register to referendum, people eligible to vote were in the zone or the contiguous zones. The alternative, uh, to changing the zone is you could have an update to the master plan. When you update the master plan, you can then issue concordance bylaw. When you issue a concordance bylaw, that can also change the zoning for Coates St Luke Road. And a concordance bylaw is also subject to a register and referendum. But a register and referendum for a concordance bylaw are town-wide, not just for the residents living in a specific zone and contiguous zones. So those are the two ways that you can go about changing zoning. To answer the question on specific spot zoning situations and evictions with regards to tenanted buildings, as long as somebody is doing renovations within the confines of the zoning in place, there is no register and referendum applicable. If there is zoning to X stories or X density, and somebody wants to do something outside the scope of that zoning, then it will be subject to a register and referendum. There's no way that you can have a register or referendum specifically on the item of tenanted or non-tenanted buildings.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. I bet I wasn't paying a hundred percent attention. I was adding up the numbers for the next question. But I'm sure it was right from what I heard. Okay, Adrian Decker, councillor Eddy, I have a PhD in biostatistic. I wasn't talking about a few points. Okay, I just re-added up the numbers and, uh, I will give them to you one more time. Thirty-five percent is for the entire group, Coates St Luke Road and rest of Hampstead combined. Thirty-five percent, no change. Eleven percent, uh, six stories. Thirteen percent, eight stories. Twenty-four percent, ten stories. Fourteen percent, more than ten stories. Adds up to ninety-seven percent. The remaining three were either rounding errors or, uh, I believe, uh, people who did not answer. So yes, they do add up the right way. Um, anonymous, so your answer is that you did not make the rest of the council aware of the distinction because you did think it was, it matters. I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. I did not think it was relevant at, uh, to make that aware at the beginning. Um. Um, anonymous, thank you councillor Buttoning. Okay, and I thank you too. And that does it. We are moving on to the meeting. We're already late for our town hall meeting, uh, so we'll try to cover things as quickly as we can. Um, adoption of the agenda, motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Uh, Schaefer seconded by councillor. Goldwax is resolved that the agenda of the special council meeting is hereby adopted as submitted. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, that brings us to this resolution, which I will read because I think it's very important. It's the resolution on the upzoning of Coates St Luke Road, whereas many buildings on Coates St Luke Road are in poor condition. Whereas allowing higher buildings will attract developers and lead to a revitalised streetscape. Whereas the extra tax revenue from these new buildings at a height of ten stories will result in significant new funds for the town. Whereas residents in the town have clearly expressed a desire for upzoning to ten or more stories. Whereas residents have also expressed a clear desire for a new civic centre without higher taxes. Whereas ten stories will allow the building of a civic centre within about four years, as opposed to a much longer delay with only eight stories. Whereas ten stories allow, uh, whereas ten stories will allow developers to spread the cost of upscale amenities over more units fleeting to higher quality buildings. Whereas the civic centre will attract more young families to Hampstead and lead to increased house values. Whereas the influx of these new residents will lead to more major renovations, which results in lower tax increases for the vast majority of residents. Whereas the new tax revenue from developers leads to lower taxes for Hampstead residents. Whereas the new housing options on Coates St Luke Road will allow seniors to downsize without leaving Hampstead and will also provide quality options for young people leaving the family home. It is proposed by Mayor William Steinberg, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, and resolved that the town should increase the density on Coates St Luke Road from Stratford to the western limit of Hampstead to allow ten-story residential buildings with a smaller front setback and a larger rear setback than the present bylaw requires. And since this is important, we'll go councillor by councillor. They can vote for or against, and they can express their views on why they're voting for or against as they wish. Councillor Wigginsburg.
I'm voting for it because I really do believe that it's the best thing for the entire town of Hampstead.
Thank you councillor Eddy.
I'm voting against.
Okay, councillor Alfasi.
You're mute.
I'm sorry?
He's muted.
Leon is mute. Leon, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you, I, I saw. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Harvey. Uh, sorry for, uh, not paying attention for being muted. Uh, my position, and I've been very consistent from the get-go, I am very much for. am very much for upzoning Coates St. Luke Road. I've said it for many years. And I also listen to residents and they're concerned because we have to really pay attention to what resident, especially those who are affected. And I've been saying for quite a while that eight stories is a compromise. Eight-story upzoning to up to eight stories and maybe we'll look into the recessed ninth floor. But eight stories is my belief a good compromise for us to proceed and get the extra revenue. And that being said, I also made a comment in one of the social media where I strongly believe that we should not connect the future civic center with upzoning Coates St. Luke Road. I think those are two totally different items. Each one can be sustained by its own. And I explained, we now sitting on over six million surplus. We probably have seven or more.
Five or six.
Okay, but this year with the coming year, I don't know how much we're gonna be getting. It'll be, I'm sure it will be close to seven and more. And I think that the civic center is much needed in Hampstead. It's really needed. There's a lot of young families moved into our community in the past five years. What did we give to those residents throughout the last sixteen years that I'm a councillor and before? Is the same tennis courts and the same swimming pool. We did not give anything back to the council, to the resident for the high taxes or services beyond what we normally do, which is infrastructure, garbage, snow removal, et cetera, et cetera. So to me, I think civic center is needed. We can build ten million dollar civic center and not twenty. And we can, if we get grants, great. If we don't get grants, we can absolutely take a loan plus our surplus as part of it, eighty percent of it, of the surplus, take a loan of four, five million dollars and build yourself a civic center of ten million to service the community and that is my strong belief. I've said it before, I repeat it now. And again, for Coates St. Luke Road, that's the item we have now on the table. I strongly believe that there is a concern of resident that we have to listen to. And at the same time, I'm a believer that Coates St. Luke Road will be abzoned, if not in our time, in somebody else's time, meaning in a future time. So that's my position. I believe, again, in summary, eight stories is my position. I'm open to listen and see an option with a mezzanine on the ninth, recessed ninth floor. That's my position. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Goldwax.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your attention. I will state that I am not for the resolution of ten stories, but I will allow the opportunity to say some points. Thirty-five percent of the respondents wanted to maintain height, but that doesn't mean that the properties were not to be improved upon and is currently being done in several buildings in Coates St. Luke Road, which we've seen in Hampstead and I also see in Montreal along Coates St. Luke Road. The mayor stated Coates St. Luke residents are the ones who don't want upzoning. However, anyone can spin numbers to look favorably. Let's look at the reality and actual numbers. In total, there were five hundred and forty-four respondents, of which only sixty-seven, twelve percent, are represented by Coates St. Luke Road, leaving eighty-eight percent for the rest of Hampstead, four hundred and seventy-seven. Overall, thirty-five percent of respondents want to maintain the current, maintain the current heights of three to five stories. This represents forty households that live on Coates St. Luke Road out of the five hundred and forty-four respondents. Another twenty-three percent came from the rest of Hampstead who voted to keep three to five stories. Doesn't mean they want, doesn't mean they don't want new buildings or nice buildings. They just want to maintain the height. Sixty percent, actually fifty-nine point seven, want eight stories or less, which represents a majority of the respondents versus the the comment that the mayor stated, the majority of people want change, want ten stories or more. Actually, it's not. Eight stories or less, sixty percent, fifty-nine point seven percent. Three hundred and twenty-one of the five forty-four state they want to have eight stories or less. When the, the, in fact, only thirty-eight percent want ten stories or more. Question two, which was intertwined with the, with the survey about a, an, a community center. I stated from the get-go in an email to council and caucus that I do not, should not be intertwined and they should not be in conjunction and they should not be correlated. The distribution literally stated ten stories would generate one point eight million dollars a year, which would allow for a new civic center within four years. How can it be predicted that in four years from now, we're gonna get one point eight million dollars when the buildings have not been sold, torn down, vacated, torn down, built and then new assessments made on these buildings? It is impossible to get one point eight million dollars in four years. A referendum was held a year and a bit ago on a single proposed ten-story building, resulting in a higher turnout than this survey alone, where five hundred and ninety-three people, sixty-nine percent voted against it and thirty-one percent in favor. It was stated these results are skewed because it was only affected people on Coates St. Luke Road and surrounding streets and it did not include the whole of Hampstead. So this prompted the mayor to use town resources and money to distribute a very controversial mayor in advance of the survey. So the individuals who read the believed blue sky promises that would come in a four-year if only ten-story or higher is approved. The final version of the published B C two report states on pages twenty-four and thirty-six that ten stories has significant visual impact view from Queen Mary Road. Eight stories is noticeable and while six stories has minimal visual impact, while the current four stories is hidden almost entirely from view. They also show the top two stories are always recessed in the rear, meaning four plus two, six plus two, eight plus two. Even the final report recommends, as demonstrated by the visual impact studies and shadow studies, we recommend, this is B C two talking, that the building height should remain between six and eight stories. They want on to say a maximum height of eight stories with a setback for the seventh and eighth stories on the rear side equal to two point four meters from rear of the building. We have stated, I have stated publicly already that I even sent on a mailer with two other councillors at our own dime, sent on a mailer stating what we believe and strongly believe where the properties should not be higher than eight stories. And this is where I'm standing. The properties, I do not agree to a ten-story resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, and councillor Budning.
No, I'm not voting in favor of this. And quite frankly, I was dismayed to see this as a resolution. I think that as a council, we normally discuss and, you know, put forward motions where typically speaking, we've deliberated internally. And this was just unilaterally put on the agenda by the mayor, who's clearly not in the same view as council because this resolution is gonna fail. So, you know, I don't think all of us are at a touch with reality. I think that a lot of us are taking different approaches to listening to residents, to evaluating information, digesting information, listening to, listening to professionals, whether it be reports from B C two, from urban planning, Altus report from an economic study, SEMA from a traffic study, Leje from a poll, talking to residents, discussing, deliberating, conversing. And yet, this is still gonna fail. So I'm not sure who's really out of touch with reality here, but this is not something that's gonna pass as far as I'm aware. And I don't understand why this is on the agenda. And furthermore, when we change zoning, we do it with a zoning change and I've never seen a resolution like this before. So anyways, to answer your question, no, I'm not voting in favor.
Councillor Schaefer.
I've carefully listened to all my fellow councillors and I respect their viewpoint. Let me, allow me to tell you what I have to say. I'm definitely in favor of upzoning. I'm aware of the B C two report that councillor Goldwax detailed, for which I thank him. I too am not in favor of a ten-story building. I think that what councillor El Fassi stated is basically my view that I believe that an eight-story building is quote-unquote, to use his terms, a fair compromise. And whether it may take a few extra years to derive or earn sufficient revenues to accomplish what we want to achieve, so be it. But I think if we have, if we respect the interests of all residents of Hampstead, I think eight stories is, I believe, the right choice. Although your resolution has nothing to do with the civic center and really, once my fellow, some of my councillor, fellow councillors made mention of the civic center, I do want to make it clear to everyone listening that I am one hundred percent in favor of a civic center, but not, not upon the shoulders of a ten-story building. I think that if it takes a bit longer with an eight-story building, so be it. But I also think that we, we all know that Coates St. Luke succeeded in getting a grant. We know that Montreal West got a substantial subsidy and I can't see why down the road we should not get a subsidy to enable us to build our civic center. And if not, maybe follow the suggestion of councillor El Fassi, borrow the, the money we need to add to our surplus and have our civic center. It is true that we're a pretty wealthy community and we offer very few or, if any, services other than the tennis courts and the pool. And I think that Hampstead residents who pay a lot of property tax do deserve a civic center. So to summarize, I'm, I, my compromise is eight-story. I'm against the ten-story. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I am going to vote in favor. And I am asking that T A T P records my vote in favor. Of course, the resolution is not passing, but that really isn't important. The resolution was put on the agenda because the residents of Hampstead have a right to know what their councillors stand for.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, so those who vote yea, it's councillor Wigginsburg and yourself. And for nay, it's councillor Edri El Fassi, Goldwax, Budning and Schaefer. Am I right?
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to continue. I have always believed that I answer to the residents of the town of Hampstead, that I am expected to lead and that I am not supposed to just follow and I'm certainly not supposed to cater to a small minority at the expense of a very large majority. I know some of the councillors believe that the survey results show different things than I think they do. But I'm very confident that I do understand statistics and research and I know, and I've spoken to numerous residents, as have many of the councillors. The difference is, I don't think the councillors are listening to all those residents they're speaking to because the vast majority of residents do want ten or more stories and a lot more than just shown by the survey. Why? Because virtually everybody who was against upzoning Coates St. Luke Road filled out the survey. That's my interpretation. People are free to disagree. I mean, we have to stand on what we believe in. And I believe that maybe only one-third or one-quarter of the people who are not, who are in favor of upzoning actually bother to fill out the survey. But they will come out and vote and they will have an opportunity to vote in the election just a little over four months from now. And they, they will have choices. And, and then we will see what they say. At this point, it is obvious that upzoning Coates St. Luke Road is at a standstill because I am certainly not going to do anything to upzone to eight stories. If we go to eight stories, we'll never get ten stories. And the reason is, nobody tears down an eight-story building in order to build a ten-story building. So we have one chance to get this right and this is the chance. So I know, the only way we're gonna move forward before the election is if some of the councillors change their mind, then we can move forward. Otherwise, we're at a standstill, but there will be an election. If there's a new council elected, then of course, things will be very different. I want to point out that, yes, we have about a seven million surplus at the end of 2020. Some of it obviously has to be used for other things, not just the civic center, but just round numbers. If we go to ten stories compared to eight stories, eventually, not immediately, but eventually, we'll be getting an extra six hundred thousand of revenue each and every year. And that represents, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, about borrowing of about six million because it'll cover the debt service on that. No local tax increases above inflation. So you take seven million, six million, thirteen million right there. I'm not even counting a grant because twice we've tried, twice we failed. We're gonna try to be a little bit smarter next time. There's another grant opportunity. Right now, deadline, the end of July twenty-third, if I'm not mistaken. Of course, we're gonna try for it. There are some decisions to be made. There's also the possibility, given that we are a wealthy community with a lot of wealthy residents, some may want naming rights to rooms of the library, the auditorium, the gym, the whatever, maybe even the whole building. And might be able to spend a lot of money. I know that when one resident wanted to have a indoor hockey arena, within a week, he had pledges for two million dollars. There's money out there for all kinds of things. So I do think we can have a civic center. I think we can have it in four years, more or less. I also read the Altus report very carefully and aside from just that six hundred thousand of extra revenue, ten stories compared to eight stories, there's also the fact that they are making an assumption that only one building will be built at the time on Coates St. Luke Road with thirty months between each building. If that's the case, it will take quite a while. I don't think that's reasonable. I think it's overly conservative. I think Coates St. Luke Road is a wide street. I think it's quite possible you'll have two or three buildings being built at the same time and that speeds up the timeline for getting the money greatly. I also see a lot of other ways in which our revenues are growing and will continue to grow, especially if we are going to be doing a civic center, especially if we are upzoning and to ten stories. So I'm, I'm very happy with this resolution. I'm very glad that the residents of Hampstead know where everybody stands. I'm hoping some of the councillors will change their minds so we can move faster. The residents know what they have to do if they want to see that happen. They have to get in touch with their councillors and let them know how they feel. Lots of residents get in touch with me, but I'm not the problem. So that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just, can I just add on one point? You, thank you very much for everything you said. But one thing you stated, you stated that the people who voted were only the, the people who are against development and that come November, the people who are gonna come out to vote will vote and, and elect people. I, I, I just like to say, and this will be my, the going into our fourth mandate for some of us and three and two and others. Elections are not about a single item platform. Elections are re-electing or electing people who have done and accomplished a lot of things in the past tenure of either fifteen, twelve or eight years. So to make the election about come November and vote the people you want for a ten-story or plus is not what the election is all about. That's, that's a referendum question, not a general election question.
That's fine. I agree with, I agree with everything you're saying. It's all true. I do think the whole fact, the height on Coates St. Luke Road is very important to a lot of people. I think it is something that they're interested in and.
If it was so interested, we'd have more than five hundred and forty-four respondents.
Perhaps. Anyway, there's no point in debating all this. We've spent lots of time in caucus. We spent time tonight. We'll just wait and see how things come out. Okay, moving on, we get to five point oh on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor.
Sorry, before a second, it's a minor derogation. Was there no intervention from?
No, there's no intervention received. No, there's no intervention received.
Wanted to clarify that because it wasn't noted if there was or wasn't. So that's what I was clarifying.
Okay, so second.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax. Okay. To resolve that the request for four minor exemptions is zoning violation number one thousand and one dash two for the property located at five four six two Queen Mary Road. Law number two oh eight nine four six eight, zoning RE one is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that the proposed fence on Queen Mary Road is too close to the sidewalk and must be offset at a minimum distance of three meters from the boundary line on Queen Mary. All unresolved zoning issues for that house must be addressed by urban planning. Anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted. Brings us to six point oh, I guess. Almost there. Okay. Six point oh. Approval of a receipt and transaction signed between the syndicate. Well, anyway, Q P Local four two nine and employee number one four seven nine in the town of Hampstead. It was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. And resolved to approve the receipt and transaction signed on, well, it doesn't have a date here.
Major Tap, do you have the date? Major Tap?
No, I'm sorry. I don't have the document with the exact date, but there's only one document dealing with the subject, so.
Twenty-eighth. Director's sign just typed in, June twenty-eighth.
Okay, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one between the syndicate Day Fonctionnaire Municipal de Montreal, Q P Local four two nine, employee number one four seven nine and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. Seven point oh. Resolution to extend the probation period of Mrs. Laurie Georgia Kaza as division chief communications. It was proposed by councillor.
Do we have a specific period, a supposed, a probation period of three months?
That's what it says in here, three months.
Edry.
Yes, and I will second councillor Edry's proposal, resolution.
Proposed by councillor Edry, segmented by councillor Shafer, and resolved to extend the probation period of Mrs. Laurie Georgia Kaza as division chief communications by three months from July first to September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. Eight. Would someone like to move a German?
Shafer. Goldwax and Shafer.
Okay, councillor Goldwax, seconded by councillor Shafer. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, that's it. Meeting's over. We are now moving to our town hall meeting. So if anyone here, I see there are thirteen people still here. If you want to switch over to the town hall meeting, I will do the same and and we will do that. So I'm leaving this meeting.
Good night, everybody. Bye-bye.
Good night, Major Tap.
Good night.
Richard, thank you. Is Cherry going to reconnect us?
You have to click on the link that was sent to you in the invitation. If not, Terry will invite you in. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.
Yeah, Cherry, can you invite me in?
Yeah. Cherry, me too.
Yes.
You're very much in demand, Cherry.
Yeah. Harvey, gotta tell you, I'm proud of your statement.
Jack, you're still live. Jack, Jack, you're still live.
Doesn't matter.
I'm just saying, I'm just letting you know you're still live.
No, but I appreciate that from Jack, Michael.
That's okay. That's, I appreciate it too. I'm just letting you know that it's still a live meeting.
That's okay.
Now we're out.